Pretty comprehensive agenda today. I'm sure we can get through it. First, we'll have a presentation from the Virginia Symphony and then an update from the registrar. We have to counsel interest and concerns there. Several staff presentations. One would be the five-year forecast that we're required to bring to counsel each year. And then we'll close with Brian giving us a legislative update.
Okay. We have a couple of very special guests with us tonight. We have Eric Bornstein, who's the President and Executive Director of the Virginia Symphony, and someone who's no stranger to us, of course, Maestro Joanne Paletta, who's the music director, longtime music director of Virginia Symphony. And Joanne, you know, as always, we're thrilled and honored to have you here. But maybe Eric would like -- this is a -- we're starting out on some good news here, guys. So, here we go.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thanks for this time to update you a little bit on the Virginia Symphony Orchestra. Now, five years ago, the city of Norfolk provided a critical lifeline in the form of a loan from the EDA at a pretty dire moment in the history of the Virginia Symphony. Now, since then, we've worked very hard to strengthen our organization and even increase our services and programs to the community. Now, we're certainly not out of the woods, but we're much stronger than we were then. And a lot of that is -- has to do with the support that we get from this community and from the city of Norfolk. And really, we're here tonight to just give you some great news. The Virginia Symphony has received an extraordinary donation that will allow us to retire the EDA loan completely. So, we're here to just share that good news with you. And so, Joanne and I, and the Virginia Symphony's Director of Education and Community Engagements, Marshall Staples, is here as well. And we're here, really, just to say thank you. So, Joanne.
Good evening, Mayor Fram. Good evening to all of you. It's my pleasure just to add my thanks to what Eric has said. I've lived in Norfolk for 22 years, and it's been a very happy 22 years. And I've seen as you have many, many changes. But one thing that has never changed here, that is the love of the city for the symphony and the support, the amazing support that we get from the city of Norfolk. It enables us to really be part of the musical framework. It has enabled us to take advantage of the fact that you have created a cultural environment here. We're very, very proud to represent Norfolk. Thanks to you, we've been doing some special concerts, Martin Luther King Concert, concert coming up at the Zoo, concerts in libraries. Again, it's all thanks to your belief in the power of music. The musicians ask me many, many times, because you don't see them and they don't see you, to express personally their warmest thanks to all of you. As you know, they come to Norfolk from all over the country, all over the world, and they make this their home. And they don't leave because they love it. So, from all of us, we want to tell you how privileged we feel and how proud we are to represent you as the Virginia Symphony. Thank you for your support.
Thank you for coming by. And Chuck, you helped me. The loan was in the approximate amount of $250,000 five years ago, and with the payment tonight --
It was $500,000?
Well, it was a 250 and 250. I think the EDA made the loan in the amount of $250,000. And with you now, this is an addition, 100 is what I'm told, which is we retire the loan. We make some loans to nonprofits and arts organizations rarely, and even more rarely do we get paid back.
I don't know if you need any when we get there.
Well, I mean, this is sort of on a wing and a prayer, but it was a good thing to do then, and the fact that you've now paid all of it back even sooner than we thought you would is really something we're all proud of. It says that, you know, we can help other organizations now. And we know these are tough times for some of these arts organizations, but the fact that you all have done so well, and we're going to be there for you in the future for sure, but it'll help us if we need to, to help other people succeed. So, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Joanne, thanks for hanging in with us all these years.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
You definitely come back with more money next year.
Yeah, I mean, there was some doubt that we would ever see that. So, but that's good.
We'll get some money back.
Okay. Polling place, Janice.
Mayor and members of council, on behalf of the Norfolk Electoral Board, I would like to present two precinct relocation recommendations. Our first is for a temporary relocation in the Chrysler Precinct. The move would be to the Chrysler Museum Glass Studio from the main part of the museum. This would be a temporary location based on the fact that the Chrysler Museum is undergoing an expansion project. It started in the 31st day of December 2012 and should go through spring of 2013. The elections that would be impacted would be June of 2013, November 2013, possibly May of 2014. The board's recommendation is to temporarily relocate the polling place from the Chrysler Museum to the Chrysler Glass Studio, which is just across the street. It's on Grace Street, and to remain there until the expansion is complete. This proposal has been reviewed with the Director of the Museum and has been reviewed by the ADA Coordinator for the city. So, everything is ADA compliant that we would be going to. This is some screenshots of the front and the back side of the glass studio. Our second recommendation would be a permanent relocation of the United Way Precinct to the Lake Taylor High School. The name of the precinct we would recommend would be Lake Taylor. This is necessary because the polling place contract for United Way was not renewed for a new term, so we do have to relocate. There were no public buildings available in the United Way Precinct, so we started looking for public buildings that were within the one-mile limit to the precinct. We looked at several, and the recommendation of the board was to go with Lake Taylor High School. The entrance to the high school is within .34 miles of the United -- to the precinct line and within 1.68 miles of the current polling place, the United Way building. Lake Taylor School offers adequate space, has its own parking in the rear beautiful entrance to the building, and the voting entrance would be separate from the rest of the school, so that would help on Election Day. And they welcome us with open arms, which is very unusual. Sometimes we run into a little headwind there, but they are excited and delighted to host us if that's your decision. This proposal has been reviewed with the school system facilities and with the principal, the athletic director, the custodian, and everybody on the Lake Taylor staff. It's been very, very accommodating. ADA compliance is 100% there, so there are no ADA issues whatsoever. These are just some photographs of the building and the ample space that they have. The building has a doorway. There are no physical barriers from the parking lot all the way into the building. No ramp is needed, and the interior of the building does have plenty of space for setup and for crowd control when that is necessary. We would need this in place by May in order to send out new voter cards to those people who are affected by this change and the -- before the June primary, which will be on June 11th. So, we would need this to be accomplished by May. And it does take about 60 days' time to go through the Department of Justice notification and review process.
Please. Certainly, no issues with the Chrysler. The Lake Taylor one, I don't know if there are any -- I don't know if there are any other buildings. I just hate to have a precinct outside of the precinct boundaries. The other thing is the name. When you say Lake Taylor, you've also got Lake Taylor Hospital. You've got --
Lake Taylor Middle.
You've got Lake Taylor Middle. I mean, I'm just -- you know, that might confuse some people, especially on the first time they vote. I don't know, so.
Well, the polling place address would be Lake Taylor High School, the precinct. We try to get a shortened version of that.
Two concerns is parking for the Glass Studio. I'm trying to remember exactly where its location is, but it is across the street from the Chrysler, correct?
Yes.
Right. Is there parking, separate parking lot for Glass Studio?
It's in the back.
Is it on the back side? Is that where it is?
It's a big parking lot.
Okay.
That won't be an issue.
Well, the pictures that you showed of Lake Taylor are of the gym side. There is no parking directly by Lake Taylor High School's gym. There is a parking lot in between Lake Taylor Middle and the gym, but the -- right, but the pictures they're showing are they -- where are they entering in? If they're entering through the front of the building, there's no parking.
It would be the back of the building. There's a parking lot in the back of the -- large parking lot in the back of the building, which enters through the blue doors there, and it's a --
Why wouldn't they choose the cafeteria side, which has a parking lot right off of the cafeteria?
What we found when we went there was that that parking lot services staff, students. The parking lot in the back is free. It's an overflow parking lot.
The parking lot in the back is actually the student parking lot, not the staff parking lot. That is the staff parking lot. It's not full during the day, but if they knew that there was an election coming up, like some of the other schools, they usually tell the staff to park in other places. But I do have -- I mean, particularly because of driving behind Lake Taylor and trying to get back there. And I know you guys are really tight for space there, and so my other question was, have you looked at Fair Lawn combined -- is Fair Lawn's number too big to combine this into one precinct?
Yes.
But the staff side of the parking should be where this is done, because that's -- I don't know if you've ever been back there to try to park, and it's confusing.
Especially during the school day.
It's confusing to get back there. It's blocked off. There's only one way in. Try to loop it around, but it's -- Lake Taylor Middle, actually.
We looked at Lake Taylor Middle, and it didn't work.
I just think it's going to cause some big issues over there. If they could allow people to park in the front of the building, you know, along the area, then the curb, then that would be easy, but they would -- the buses go to the back of the building. The only buses at Lake Taylor that drop off in the front are the special ed buses. The regular buses drop off actually in the back of the building.
When we discussed this with the staff, they seemed to think that the parking -- I mean, the parking and the traffic flow would not be a problem in the back of the building.
Right. And I respect their opinion, but they are not people that have been involved in elections and know how people interact and vote on Election Day. And I mean --
Is it possible to maybe have signage out?
We would have, yes. There would be signs all along where they're starting.
Inward.
Yeah, there starts at the street and comes all the way back. Yeah, direction signs.
Or extra signage, maybe?
Yes, there would be.
The exit way to, the exit and entrance way there, it's a little bit deceiving, but that is a very long walk to the parking lot, and there's another street that you have to cross. I just, I know you guys are tight for space, but this is not a -- the location of this in the building is not the best place for it, in my opinion. And I don't -- Paul, this is a disenfranchised type.
I'm not familiar with the interior, you know, diagram of it. As far as the school is concerned, as a polling place, you know, that's fine with me. So, whatever you can work out with them, you know, is fine in terms of location, but the school is fine. So, the logistics, if you guys give it to me and who knows the diagram of the school and work it out.
I mean, I didn't have a problem with the location either, personally. I mean, you know, I spoke to them and got the numbers and whatnot. I don't have a problem with it. It does strike me as ironic, now that I sit and listen to it, that we are a United Way agency, yet the United Way isn't one of the names they're building.
Yeah.
That's very interesting, but.
That's the way it works. So, I mean, you know, give them comments, I would be -- you guys work it out.
I think that the message is here, you have to make sure, I mean, there has to be plenty of signage. I'd be very careful during the day to make sure that the parking doesn't get overloaded like that. I mean, even when I go out there, it's confusing when you get back there unless somebody's really waving you around. There are all sorts of "don't park here" signs and stuff, so anyway, you just have to be, especially that first election, you really have to be very careful about it to make sure people get home.
And if the buses are still dropping off in back of the building, which they were a year ago, that will present an issue for you on school days. They will have to reroute the buses, I guess, to the front of the building for drop off.
It would make sense that if they were to work with the teachers and staff to move them in the back during Election Days, it would probably be -- but then they would still have to come to the -- you would hope they have the machines where, in the gym?
In the gym.
Yeah, so they would still have the long walk, so just to kind of limit the walk as, you know, least distraction in the school building, of course.
I think the gym was recommended because --
Because of that, yeah.
Yeah, because the cafeteria, you know, you can't shut that down on Election Day.
Lake Taylor has two cafeterias, though. All right, thanks. So, on this one, justice asks for 60 days and requires you to act first, so as soon as we work on what you just discussed, we'll bring it back to you.
Bring it back next time.
We love the time.
Next time, with me. Andy, we can come back to you if you would, or you have anything, you know.
I'm happy.
Is she ready?
As we prepare our budget for the next year, I would hope in public works, you know, our streets throughout the city, they need to be remarked in terms of the crosswalks and lanes and things of that nature. The yellow tips of traffic medians, a lot of them have faded, and so I would hope that we'd be able to, you know, do a lot with that. Also, I just came down from Granby Street and Hampton, let me see, Granby Street, Little Big Road, and I saw the Pro Gero fence that went, you know, right across the, where they're doing the proposed, you know, where they're doing the Harris Tita. It's beautiful, you know, Jared's fence. It looks like wrought iron, but I'm sure it's Jared. And we have that same problem in terms of people crossing, you know, in the medians in other parts of the city. And I think what we need to do, all of us need to get together and find some sites, you know. For example, in front of Ruffin Middle School, I mentioned to John Kiefer when we opened the new South Side Aquatic Center, that we put some fencing along, because kids are going to be excited to get to that aquatic center, and they're going to be shooting across the street all over. But in certain -- and they talk about over at Norfolk State where the light rail station is. So, I think if we take a little survey and put some Pro Gero-type fences, you know, in some other parts of the city. And also, Marcus, I would like us to have a presentation on the Enterprise Fund, our water department, because that's one of your most well-kept secrets, let me see, that's one of your most well-kept secrets, and previous city managers as well, in terms of, you know, how that enterprise fund works, the Hampton Road Unified Building System, the sanitation district against stormwater. All of these things make a water bill. Water is probably one of the most reasonable things you can get in a city, but once you put refuse collection and all of those things on top of it, it's given a lot of seniors, business owners, and others, you know, a problem. So, I would like for us to get together and look at it, dissect it, and see what we can do, you know, make a little more power. That was one of Herbert Collins' things, you know, the water bill. And so, I'd like to take a look at it. I look at it as being the city manager's slush money.
I know. It's not.
All right. That's all I have.
Okay. I think those could pitch there.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor?
I would just add one thing. You know, some times what we hadn't talked about in a while, and we never did have our conversation as it relates to a work session to talk about it. And I thought about this, as, you know, talking about teen violence, I read an editorial in the paper, and which, you know, shouldn't be a secret to anyone, a story that talked about how this guy in Philadelphia stood in the street with a Klan uniform on and held up a sign talking about, you know, how many African-Americans were being slain in the streets every six months, and talking about from 1867 to how many persons were killed by Klan. And it just really spoke to the number of young people that continue to lose their lives senseless across the country through gun violence or just violence as a whole, and particularly black-on-black crime. And, you know, I know we have these various initiatives about healthy community and so forth, but it, you know, along with the conversation that I think we need to have as it relates to violence, and I'm very thankful that, you know, it hadn't reached a proportion that you see in other cities. You know, that's a blessing that we don't have that. But I still think that within our efforts to create healthy communities, that should be somehow rolled up in that initiative to create healthy individuals and to ensure that our communities are safe. And so, going into some of what I call fragile neighborhoods and trying to understand, you know, what is going on, what are services that will clue these young people from getting involved with some of the activities that they choose to get involved with. And so, coming up with programs that will allow these young people to be healthy on the inside as well as on the outside. And so, I know Bob and his people are in the communities, and I think they do a good job, but I just think that's an extra step. That's one step that we can take while we're in there. I don't know how you heal a community if you're not working with the people, the young people in the community, or if you can't come back with definitive data to tell you that these are some of the problems, causes, and effects that ail a community, then I think that we miss it. But, you know, while we're in there, you know, from day one to however long we're in there, we should be able to measure what we're doing and be able to, when we leave those communities, make sure that they are a lot healthier than they were before we had come into these communities. So, I would like to, again, you know, lay this at the foot of the council to make sure that we do not forget that, you know, this is important, that we, as a policy-setting body, that we have the ability to, again, identify some of these issues and provide opportunities. Some may cost, some may not cost, but at the end of the day, I just think that that's something that we can do to help this city as a whole and be a model across the board. That's all I have.
Angela?
I have one issue, and I was hoping the police chief would be here today, but he's not here. I got a call about, actually, I've had two calls, but anyway, got a call about an incident that happened on Granby Street with a policeman having a valet car towed. And it wasn't -- it was that the car was valeted and towed. It was parked a little bit in the alleyway, you know, but it was more or less the policeman's response and attitude to the citizen, that it wasn't his fault, it wasn't his problem. The citizen, you know, this change kind of went, couldn't you just take five minutes to walk over to the restaurant, ask them to move the car? Not my problem, you know? And, you know, we talked about the ticketing over at ODU with the games, and, you know, we have the MEAT conference coming, I think Mr. Ready brought it up before, but we have the MEAT conference coming, and we have a lot of people coming, and we want people to come downtown. We want people to, we try to get folks to come downtown. We have incidences like this, and this is the second incident that I've gotten a call on with the same particular officer. But we want people to come downtown. We want them to spend their money. If that had happened to me in another city, I would never go back. I just wouldn't go back, because there's enough other places to go to spend my money other than, you know, where this happened. So, you know, not only just with the MEAT coming, and I think there was another event going on over at the Chrysler or whatever, and there were, you know, there were a lot of cars and stuff, the policemen who are working these streets and writing tickets and doing whatever, patrolling the streets, need to exercise, number one, some common sense, but number two, they also have to exercise some good quality customer service when it comes to, you know, our citizens. And if he was having a bad day, I'm sorry, but he's on the job, and he may be, that person may not have lived in Norfolk, and that may have been the only person that they've ever come in contact with that represented the city of Norfolk. And it's not necessarily the policeman himself who would have gotten a bad name. It would have been the city of Norfolk. And so, they need to utilize some common sense and some better customer service and some judgment, especially when there's a lot going on, because these are just negative incidents that we don't -- that's all I have.
This is for John. Ward's Corner, with all of the utility work that's going on, the lights need to be adjusted to allow traffic to go through faster. This morning, they have one lane blocked off heading south on Granby Street, and it was down the two lanes, because the other side of Granby is blocked. There was a Dominion truck that blocked the other lane across, so you had two lanes trying to get into one lane very quickly, and traffic was backed all the way up. And I've observed this now multiple times, and I don't know if the light cycle can be changed while they have those lanes closed, but it's, you're sitting through three or four light cycles before you can get through. And I know that's a heavily traffic area in the mornings for people, and I've had to go around quite a bit to get there, but I know other people are probably facing the same thing, so.
That was it.
And I wanted to ask you, just to pick up where Anthony left off. I spent so much of my life dealing with homicide and black-on-black in the city of Norfolk and all over, but -- and I can tell you from what I have seen in poverty and opportunity. And I know that we have our Poverty Commission that we're, your task force.
Next meeting.
Do you know where we are, that we can get that?
We're going to, it's going to be next meeting.
Okay.
We've got everybody now signed up, and you and Angela are going to be the coaches.
Because I would really, I think, just seeing what I see and what I have seen on so much of a daily basis in my practice is something that, when you hear it, you hear it as evidence and you see that so many of the individuals, whether they're the individuals that are subject to the homicide or the individual that, you know, at some point, you know, you hear people talk and you just realize poverty and opportunity are so inherent in that. And, you know, if we can come out of that mayor's commission on and dealing with that, then we've done the right thing.
Yeah.
But we'd be good if we had it going.
Okay. At the end of the agenda, Breck will have one quick add on. The Deborah Bun, the assessor, is filling two vacancies in her office, and so we need to confirm those appointments. That's a brief add-on. Secondly, I really do want to thank Breck and everybody in his shop. That would include Alan and everyone, as well as everyone in the manager's office who helped. Sarah, everybody helped put together the State of the City program, and, you know, a lot of that is scripted and, you know, rehearsed and -- a lot of that is scripted and, you know, rehearsed and, and, I mean, the folks have just gotten so good at it that we don't, I don't want to ever take it for granted, but... So anyway, I think, you know, take me out of it, I mean, I think the presentation, the way Breck and Alan and Sarah and the staff and, you know, Brian over here put it together, I don't know that any of them, anyone else in the region comes close. So I just want to thank everybody for that, really, really, just. And then lastly, I've asked the manager to prepare a letter to go to the commissioner, Greg Worley, the Virginia Department of Transportation on behalf of the council, expressing our sort of collective outrage, is probably not too strong a word for what happened out on I-264 this past weekend in portions of 64 and 464, 564, 664. Let me, let me back up. I am, I've always held VDOT in high regard, am very reluctant to criticize them. I know they're very often asked to do too much with too little and I know they're an organization under a lot of pressure, even when the midtown tunnel filled with water. I don't think the city council criticized the VDOT, I know that. But, you know, everything that I've been able to learn since last week and having ridden that road several times before last Friday is that, you know, an observer, even a casual observer could have foreseen what was going to happen out there, that the roads were beginning to crumble. And if it was, it was certainly foreseeable and that means to me it was preventable. And the fact that VDOT did not act to prevent it demonstrates very poor judgment on their part, in my opinion. They failed us and they failed us badly. People use that road, that main part of 264 to get to work in downtown Norfolk and throughout the city, they get to Norfolk State, they get to Old Dominion, they get to our medical complexes. People could not get home that night and it didn't have to be that way. I mean, I'm convinced with a little bit of foresight, if they had been managing this, their maintenance appropriately, that we would not have had the problems that we had that night. And so I would, I want to tell Mr. Worley, the commissioner, how disappointed we are. We want to know, I would want to know who's responsible, who was the person who was responsible for making sure that the roads were maintained and that, you know, what he intends, how he intends to comfort us with the notion that, I mean, with, what's he going to do to make sure it doesn't happen again? Thank God the tires we have now are so accepting of this sort of stuff, otherwise, you know, we might, people might have been hurt, I mean, really hurt out there with blown tires and rims and cars sliding across the interstate. I understand at one point the state police were actually considering closing part of the highway. And I heard that, I don't know that to be, you know, the case, but if, I mean, that is something that needs to be remedied. We need to make, we need some sort of assurances that this is not going to happen again. People are making investments in this city, expect their employees to be able to get home from work or get to work. So I'd like to write the letter. Of course, all of this is just, this is in some ways a symptom of a larger problem, which is the fact that transportation is so terribly underfunded in the Commonwealth and that includes not only maintenance but construction as well. And the General Assembly is in session now. There seems hopefully is some progress towards more money, but we'll, we'll see. So, anyway, we'll put together that letter and I'll sign it on behalf of the council. Tonight, tend to raise the issue again when we get out to the NPO meeting and I've also talked with both of our representatives on the Commonwealth Transportation Board at the length over the weekend about it, so.
Paul, just a question, maybe you can educate me on procedures. Most organizations would do a resolution and, you know, say, "We're opposed to this, or we want something done." I know you're sending a letter and that has force, but does it mean more if council voted on a resolution or something to?
It does, we just didn't have the resolution prepared at the time.
Okay, okay.
And I would be, I'd be glad to have everybody sign this letter, to be honest with you. We can do, I didn't want to wait too long, we can certainly pass a resolution in two weeks when we come back, we don't vote next week.
Wondering if that carries more weight than a...
What's that?
Right. Is Virginia Beach, you know, taking resolutions all the time?
How, you know, how about a strong resolution to follow? We'll get the letter out and say, "Resolution to follow," something like that. Okay?
Mayor, council, as you recall, back in January, we had Team Better Block in from Texas. They did their analysis of four areas of the city. Three of the areas they did see as an opportunity and this is just a quick message from them for what the next steps are and then I'll follow.
Congress with Team Better Block?
And Andrew Howard with Team Better Block. The city of Norfolk tasked Team Better Block with reviewing potential for a better block in three strategic locations in Norfolk. Granby Street, north of Brambleton, Five Points and 35th Street Commercial Corridor.
So with the better block, what we're doing is recreating what's called a living charrette. And that's where we take the community out of the town hall and onto the street. We begin the process of creating a great place that can better identify and strengthen a community. What we did in January was we surveyed three different areas, grading them on public and private spaces, the quality of these spaces and the identification of rapid development, redevelopment potential. The survey that you guys have in front of you right now is going to show you what we've defined as the community's assets, the potential stakeholders in the area, which that includes the property owners, activists, the nonprofits, businesses and artists, and the quick win opportunities that allow a jumping off point for a better block demonstration.
We recommend beginning the better block in Norfolk in the Granby Street area, north of Brambleton, and host it in April of 2013. Let's do this quick. Host the project as a workshop for all of Norfolk to join in on and to learn how to conduct their own better blocks in their neighborhoods. We'll use this experience to have similar projects in Five Points and 35th Street later in the summer of 2013. Each will build on the success of the former and work to quicken economic development and community interest in each neighborhood. We both look forward to working with you and we'll see you very soon. Thanks, Brett.
Imagine Banner, weekend of April 12th and 13th, we're going to be inviting all neighborhoods and particularly Five Points, Ocean View and 35th Street, who we did have discussions with about what could be done in those areas. We'll use it as a workshop again, as Andrew said, and learn how to use some of those inexpensive charrette styles that we can try different things to activate, particularly vacant spaces and continue to learn from those opportunities.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I guess we've gone through all the fun stuff, so now we'll have to hear some of the numbers. As I mentioned in the committee meeting earlier, I am asked each year, the city manager is asked each year to present a five-year forecast. So we talked a little bit about this at the retreat back in September. So right now what we'll do is I'll start off with where we ended in FY 2012 and then Sabrina will pick up for where we are mid-year in FY 2013, as well as an outlook for FY 14 and the next four years in addition to that. With that said, for the most part, when we had our discussion back at the retreat, I had mentioned that the gap for FY 14, so the difference between revenue and expenditures would be no different than what you've seen in the past, roughly, you know, in that 24, $25 million range. So what we've been doing since September is trying to get that gap lower and as Sabrina discusses with you today, we have taken a significant chunk out of that. We're not down to zero, but we've been able to take a significant chunk out of that, but that has a lot to do with staff's hard work. So we typically start this off with where the money comes from and where the money goes. So we have an FY 12, you have a $795 million budget. So we're in FY 13 now, but we'll talk about FY 12, how we ended the year because that bills on 13th and 14th. So basically, in that pie chart, you'll see that to the right side of the chart, when you take real estate taxes, which in FY 12 was about 25% of our portfolio, and you take other property taxes, that's about 31% of all of the revenue that comes into the general fund. So that's, when we start to talk with the general fund, we have the taxes, the fees, the services, and we also have a big chunk of money coming in from the state. So on the left-hand side of the pie chart, you'll see that basically 38% of the revenue that comes in comes from the state. The reason we bring these two together is because as we go through this presentation, you will see that we have had less revenue coming from real estate and less revenue coming from the state. So even though there have been great efforts from staff to reduce spending, be smart with processing, the bottom line is we're getting fewer dollars from the state, not just in K through 12, but in human services, HB 599 funds, even funds for sheriff's deputies. So you see that over time, that that declined. To put this in perspective, back in 2009, the overall budget was 827 million. So 827 million dollar budget in 2009 has decreased to a $795 million budget in FY 2012. Where the money goes, basically...
Can I make one comment too? Can you tell me if I'm correct? Back when Governor Gilmore was the governor, he took away a local tax called the car tax.
That's right.
And decided to reimburse the communities a certain share of that tax with what he, with state dollars.
Right.
And so that inflated the amount coming from the state back to the cities because what he did is basically took away one of our taxes and called it his tax.
Right. That's exactly right.
And so that number, that 38% number, if you adjusted it for the fact that he took a local tax and made it, I mean, that would actually be less.
Yeah, you...
Because it always gripes me that they tell me they're sending so much money from Richmond when it, you know, they grabbed one of our taxes and called it theirs and, you know, reduced it some, but they took it out of our side of the ledger, moved it over to theirs.
Right.
Sabrina, I don't know, does that, does that make sense to you?
Yes, that's correct. As a matter of fact, it's one sum now. So it's 16.7, 16.8 million dollars, that's all it's ever going to be. So as values go up for vehicles, in the past, you with this locality would set that rate and that's...
That would be on our side and we didn't have to say, "Thanks for sending us."
That's right. That's right.
Right, okay.
So when we start to look at the review of the expenditures for 2012, the big chunk of the revenue that we have goes to education, public safety, human services and debt. So really, you know, starting with the education going all the way in this pie chart over to public safety and that's almost 70% of all the expenditures. And even when I say public safety, it's really police and fire. So, you know, we could put EOC in there, we could put the sheriff's office in there, we could put some judicial, but the point is that outside of our debt payments, which are about 10% of our expenditures, that the bulk of our expenditures are in education, public safety and health and human services. So where do we end 2012? We talked about this a little bit at the retreat last week, there was a discussion in the last month, there was a discussion about the financial statements and where we ended the year. We did end with an 8.6 million surplus. Now to put this in perspective, to FY 2011, the previous year, there was a $9 million surplus. It was, council did a very good thing in terms of that surplus, that all of it wasn't used to balance the FY 13 budget. Matter of fact, you took about a third of it to replenish reserves. We have the risk management reserve, we have the economic downturn reserve and then there's actually what we call an unassigned, or some folks would call it the rainy day fund, some people look at it as a catastrophic fund, but it's that 5% that we never go below in terms of a city. The rest of that surplus in 2011 was moved into 2012 to help balance the budget. At the retreat this year, when we mentioned that we believe that we would have a surplus right in that $8 million range, council didn't allocate any of those funds. In other words, it was set aside for potentially what would happen in 2014. And I will tell you that we'll, we will need that again in 2014 and our hope is that in balancing the budget, that there's some opportunities to use some of those one-times to match those, one-time revenue to one-time expenditures. So the big movement in terms of revenue in 2012, and the mayor mentioned some of this at his State of the City address, is that we did see growth in some key areas. So we talked about real estate being 25% of the portfolio, but there are also other local revenue that it's good to see growth in these areas, such as food and beverage tax. We saw growth there from 12, 12 over 11, hotel tax, growth there, admissions tax, there was growth there. Even in business license tax, there was actually an ordinance that was passed this past fall that helped us in terms of collections for the B-hole tax. Sales tax, while this graph shows a slight decline, that's because there was more or less a true-up or a tax adjustment at the state level, which really took 1.7 million dollars from the city and dispersed it elsewhere. If you would adjust for that, even sales tax in 2012 grew over 2011. I want to spend a little bit of time with real estate because again, 25% of the portfolio and as I mentioned earlier, the reduction in funds coming from the state and the reduction in revenue coming from real estate has put us in somewhat of a crossroads. As I look at this graph, there's probably three stories going on here. One is just that overall blue line that shows the real estate tax rate. So when we collect revenue, the way we collect the revenue, it's a function of the assessed value times the tax rate. So changes in the assessed value and changes in the tax rate will change the revenue that we collect. So you can see over time, and this chart goes back to 1990, that that tax rate has both increased and decreased. As a matter of fact, we've taken really six bars that I think tells the story. If we look at the last 10 years, so 2003 to 2013, the average real estate assessments have increased by about 7%. If you go back the last 20 years, the average real estate assessments have increased by almost 5%. And if you go back the last 30 years, the average real estate assessed values have increased by almost 6%. So somewhere between 5 and 7% has been almost automatic in terms of averages. You can see in those blue bars, in 2006, 2007, 2008, growth was way above those averages, almost 17% in 2006, almost 25% in 2007 and almost 18% in 2008. So if you go back to that formula, it's the assessed value times a rate equals revenue. What occurred during those times is that you see that blue bar goes down, that the tax rate actually was cut. Five cents in 2006, eight cents in 2007, 16 cents in 2008. But even with that five cent reduction in 2007, the revenue that came in, so you take that rate times the assessed value, was still $16 million more than the previous year. So the cut was worth about almost $6 million in revenue that didn't come in, but you still received $16 million more than the previous year. Same thing happened in 2007, the eight cent reduction, still there was growth of $22 million over the previous year. And the same thing happened in 2008, even though there was a 16 cent reduction, because the assessed values had climbed so high, there was still $2 million additional revenue over the previous year. I say all that to say that in the last three years, including the current fiscal year, we've been in a very different situation, three consecutive years of declines. So if you go back 30 years, this has not occurred. So in these three consecutive years of decline, there were no adjustments to the rate. So it basically meant that the city lost about $15 million over those three years in real estate revenue. The same thing can be said of state funding. In this table, if you go back to 2007, between 2007 and 2012, so I'm just focusing on 12 right now, we had a reduction in state funds of about $35 million. And again, that's, in 2007, we received something called ABC profits and wine profits. Even though it was $300,000, we received zero now. When you go back to law enforcement, HB 599 funds, we almost collected almost $14 million back in 2007, we were down to about 11 in 2012. The same thing can be said about school funding, the same thing can be said about human services funding, the same thing can be said about jail per diem. So again, two big sources of revenue have declined for us. So again, two big sources of revenue have declined for us. With this said, that gives us this backdrop for FY 2012. So where are we now? In the fall, we pulled together our first group of economic advisors. We actually had the governor's chief economist, John Lehman, come to the city. We also had Gil Yocum and individuals from not just in the city, but across the region. And we talked with them about their outlook for the economy. It's very interesting. Four issues came over and over again. We had, actually, we had the rear admiral, Tim Alexander, had a talk even about what was going on in the Navy, in the military. But employment, housing, and defense spending came up over and over again, and also education. It was very clear that there was a belief that a strong education system helps a strong, helps build a strong economy. So it was a very refreshing discussion. As we follow, as I'm about to turn it over to Sabrina, one of the things that we did since that point is just follow those areas. So at the national employment, if you, there are two figures here. If you go back to the period between February 2008 and February 2010, nationally, we lost 8.7 million jobs. Since March 20, March 2010 to January 2013, we've not recovered all those jobs. Only 5.5 million jobs have been recovered. What does that mean for the region? If you come to the region, same concept, regional employment. We, from 2007 to now, you can see that we had, from the peak, we lost 40,000 jobs, but we've only recovered 7,000 of those jobs. The housing market, maybe, you know, one of the highlights of this discussion is that as you look at January 2012 through December 31st, 2012, this is the first annual increase that we have seen in average sales prices for homes in Norfolk. That is about 5%. And I will tell you that that's more than the region, and actually, when you start to look at the seven cities, is the highest growth amongst those seven cities. So that's something that we, we take into account also, as well as home sales. Home sales rose also by over 4%. So again, 25% of the portfolio, three consecutive years of declines. I won't steal Sabrina's thunder, so I won't. So with this said, the biggest thing that's out there for us is defense spending. And, and that's why we have a big question mark here. There is a, clearly, there are estimates that what happens in Washington could be anywhere from a 7% to 10% cut in defense spending. We have not been able to quantify what that is for the region. Those are estimates from the Congressional Budget Office, as well as the Center for Strategic and Budgetary Assessment, but it is the wild card out there right now. So that's what, the information that we have is we start to build on FY 13 and FY 14.
I saw her give you those eyes, Marcus-
What's that?
-when you were treading on her.
That's why I shut it there.
Yeah.
Now we move into the mid-year update. FY 13 budget is about $800 million, and it's really only about $5 million over our FY 12 budget. And as you can see, our state and federal still make up about 36, almost 37% of our budget. And that is a decline from our 12 budget. It went down about $4 million. And you can tell the real estate, which is at 24.4% up there, in 2012, it was actually at 25%. So that's where the money comes from, but where does it go? More than half of our budget goes to education and public safety. If you take educations, 302, and our public safety, which is police and fire, they make up about $400 million of our budget. And then debt services about 10%, and health and human services is about 6.5%. But when you look at our general fund budget, for our city departments, personnel is a major driver, about 71% of our budget. And in that, you also have retirement, and you have healthcare, and some PICA and some group life, but basically salaries are pretty high. The mid-year update, as we move, as we are, I guess midpoint February, we're tracking right now to a $4 to $6 million positive variance, and that's a combination of revenue and expenditures. We're down on our revenue about $2 to $3 million, and we're up on our general fund expenditures about $7.8 million. That's because we've actually instituted some budget saving strategies already, knowing the 2014 budget is going to have some gaps in it. We've already implemented mid-year realignment savings for the departments.
Sabrina, where is that? The, the revenue that's down, where is that, where is that from?
Some of that is in FEMA, that we expected FEMA to come in. It has not come in yet, so we'll be tracking it as the year goes.
Yeah, I mean, your, your numbers are improving, so I was wondering, so you're waiting on a one-time payment out of-
Right, some of it is in FEMA, and as we move into a couple more slides, some of it is in our local taxes.
Here's-
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Are you going to define realignment savings?
Yes.
I have a question about, we talked about salaries, and I know some agencies, I know we have some part-time employees and we have full-time employees, and I know some agencies-
For youth-
-are cutting hours back because of the Affordable Healthcare Act, so they don't have to- Do we have any employees that are affected by the number of hours that they work?
No.
And we don't have any, okay.
No, it's, I think it's over 30 hours in all of our employees, our part-time employees over 30 receive healthcare.
Okay, very good.
I think we have a few that are contracted, that are working above it, that, that's a contracting issue that we have to fix.
Okay.
And realignment savings are budget saving strategies, are productivity measures that we've asked the departments to implement to creatively administer services and find more efficiencies within, within their department. Continuing with the mid-year update, our local taxes, while the city manager spoke about some of the taxes increasing, this is a look at December to December. So in sales tax, we are experiencing a three-year trend upwards. In meals, or restaurant, or food and beverage, as women call it, it's about a three-year trend upwards, and it's about a 1.9% increase. Our hotel had two years' worth of growth, but now it's starting to see a decline. It's about 3.8% below what we experienced last year. And our admissions tax-
How much did you say?
3.8. And, I'll tell you, do you want the actual dollar figure?
No, that's good.
Okay. The admissions tax is also experiencing a decline, that's about 10.5% decline. And our recadation, because our housing market is starting to stabilize, we're starting to see an increase of about 7% there. So some of these taxes are what's affecting our revenue that's coming in. But again, I mean, B-Pole right now appears to be flat. B-Pole hasn't been submitted yet, March 1st is the deadline, but compared to last year, it looks, looks to be about flat. So preliminary five-year forecast, as you know, the administration does a five-year forecast annually, and in that, we incorporate revenue collection trends, we also incorporate any revenue adjustments that we need to make, we pull out any one-time monies that are in there, and we look at our basic cost for service, healthcare, retirement, taking all of that into account, we develop a five-year forecast. Some of our expenditure drivers, again, is healthcare, our retirement, and our debt service. Healthcare is, seems small, but it does, year-over-year growth has been high. Healthcare is about 3% of our budget, retirement is about 4.3, and debt services at 9.8. And when our real estate revenue declines and our general fund revenue declines, it affects our ability to issue debt, because our debt capacity declines as well. And some of the other challenges that we face are also the operating budget of new facilities coming online. We just had Southside open up, we had Ingleside, those, those have a cost to the operating budget.
Sabrina, excuse me. The study, or the review of dependents for health insurance, have there been any results from that yet, or are they still in the process of figuring out if there were people that were-
Just, just for the city, the, I think the annual savings is a little less than $200,000.
Okay, so it wasn't significant?
But, I guess what it-
Only that is significant, I don't know.
Well, no, I think what it did, and we always say, proof in advertising, is that it gave us a discipline, you know, we just didn't know who was on the insurance. So this gave us a discipline, and we tracked this point going forward. So it's cleaning up, and I don't mean that in the negative, it's just making sure that we're implementing a program that we have some accountability with.
So they, they are finished on, at all three agencies that they did this?
I believe they are, or they're in their final stages. One of the other challenges that we have are credit agency observations that they've made during our last meeting with them. One is the structural imbalance of the budget. And in the prior presentation of financial policies, we talked about what a, what a structural balanced budget means. It's using one-time revenues for one-time expenditures. And currently, our budget is not structurally balanced. We'd like to achieve a structurally balanced budget. But given the circumstances that we have, we know that might not be possible without massive layoffs or severe reduction to the services. And also our level of debt and the slow recovery of our tax base. Those are some of the concerns that they have expressed to us. So moving on to our real estate challenges, and this is the thunder that Marcus tried to steal. While it may not be big, it's big for us, and it actually brought a tear to my eye. After three years of consecutive decline, we, in discussions with our real estate assessor, a very preliminary estimate indicates that we may be flat in the upcoming year. So I'll take flat over a decline at this point.
Me too.
Yeah. We, we were trying for a plus one or a plus two, it didn't happen, I'll take flat. So, but as you can see, in the last three years, we did experience a decline, and that was about $15 million. And we do expect state and federal revenues to remain flat in the upcoming year. So now getting to our gap. Initially, in the summer, we do a preliminary run at our gap, and that's, again, very rough numbers, we were at about $24 million. And since then, we have been able to refine some of the retirement and some of the healthcare costs. We are at about $22 million, that's rounding up, it's actually 21.8. And we've been able to cut that gap down to about 7.2 million. Now, we, every year we come in and we say we have a gap, and somehow we always come to you with a balanced budget. And we will do so again, but at 7.2 million, we do have a way to go. We brought the gap down by assuming that we're going to use the 8.6 million dollar surplus from FY 12 into 14. Again, not the ideal scenario, but unfortunately, these times dictate that. And we're also counting on some, on the realignment savings that we've already implemented, and additional personnel savings through attrition.
Sabrina, what assumptions did you make about pay?
I'm sorry?
Did you make any assumptions about budget, about employee pay increases?
No, when we do the forecast, we do not include any policy assumptions or any expansion to services or new services. That comes during the budget development process. We do the base as clean as possible, and then we add those on. So this is before any new additional money. Looking into the out-years of five-year forecasts, our immediate out-years are pretty consistent with our most recent ones and us, and the starting point of, you know, about 20, 20 to $25 million gap. Again, we will always present a balanced budget to you. It does not come without pain, unfortunately. Our real estate is modestly growing, and it only grows further on in the out-years. Pretty much summing up this slide is what we just discussed. Out-years show a gap, and one-time measures are still being used, and we hope to maybe not even use the 8.6 million. We'd like to actually put some of that into our reserves as the process moves on, or even pay down some debt, or just use it for capital, capital costs. Right now, we really don't have any cash going into our capital program, and we should.
Sabrina, how much did we roll forward in FY 2013?
In 2013, we did about, 19 million was a carry forward, 6.1 million.
So we're about, we'll be about where.
Right. And the gap, and the surplus was actually 9 million back then, and then we only rolled 6 million, and you used the other three to put into reserves. So as we move through the process, we'll continue to look at strategically realigning departments, and look for efficiencies, and evaluate the city services, and whether or not we should be providing some services, or we should just get out of the business of doing some things. Oops, sorry, I stole his thunder, he was supposed to take over the last two slides.
Hey, back.
Give her the eyes, Marcus.
Sorry, I had a big-
She was on the road.
All right, you can finish.
Questions?
Hey, Marcus, and we have a 5% of rainy day fund.
Is that?
I think you said, do we have it as a, is that your goal?
Well, we, we have this, we call it unassigned, so-
Right.
-June 30th, every year, the goal is to be at 5% of the budget.
Okay.
Yes.
And so is that the right percentage for city, our size, what we have to do, or should we try to reach higher?
We had a good discussion, Councilman Runic, earlier today about just that. We have, yes, I would say yes, we have a strong ratings right now. One of the things that we've talked about in the past is, can you get your ratings higher, and what's the, the cost of getting your ratings higher? So there, there is the philosophy out there, that if we could get that, that rainy day fund or that reserve a bit higher, that it would even strengthen our financial position. Yes, sir.
How many vacancies do you have in, for employees that you continuously roll over, or are you trying to?
Yeah.
And we, we have, we budget for positions that don't get filled sometimes, and I know you've tried to reduce that. Are we continuing that practice, or are you really trying to get that, if those positions haven't been filled in a year or two, gone, or?
Yeah. I guess the best way to say it is that I don't hold positions on my desk. So, you know, there's one way of handling a budget, you can just slow down hiring. What I've asked all the department heads to do, and I thought that David Sullivan did a virga job last month, is to look at their services and to be as smart as they possibly can about delivering the service. So if we have technology that helps us deliver service better, that maybe three people can do it instead of five, we just wouldn't fill those next, those two vacant positions. We would look to eliminate it, but before we eliminated them, if there were more technology that would help us, or, or a better way of doing, providing the service, we would, we would do that also. So we're just trying to get away from just cutting for cutting sake, if what it's doing is giving us a, a poor level of service, or we can't get our jobs done.
And the second part of that, Eric, have you seen the full effect of the retirement incentive? I mean, are you, did it work? Is it something that could be done again?
Have we seen the full effect? I know that Sabrina has a dollar amount, I want to say it's for 1.6, 1.65, so a little bit less than a couple million dollars. I don't think it, yes, it can be done again, but I don't think it should be a tool that we use just to balance the budget.
Paul, I think we learned today, earlier, that the reserves right now are a little in excess of 5% with a lot of these set sides, it's like 5.2%. Something like that.
Mayor, members of council, it's always a pleasure to be in front of you. I think she turned it off. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting on one of our priority areas, lifelong learning. There's no action required by councils for information purposes only. Hopefully everyone is familiar with, even those watching at home, with this priority area, because it addresses all segments of our population, from birth through retirement and after. I'll read it, because I do believe it is significant enough that we want to engrain our priority statements in everyone's head, so that we, as we walk around our city, we have that appreciation. That residents of all ages enjoy a culture of learning that enables them to reach their full potential, achieve personal goals, and through their knowledge, skills, abilities, and talents, become well-equipped to support a prosperous economy. and talents, become well-equipped to support a prosperous economy. It's not all about the finances, although I do appreciate the manager and Sabrina's presentation on our five-year forecast. It boils down on a very individual basis to how we each feel about ourselves. And the next several slides will go through and provide you with a fuller perspective on how we are working on each of the segments, from birth through five, through grade school, through K-12 with Norfolk Public Schools activities, although public schools activities are not specifically addressed in this conversation or this presentation. Afterwards, with higher ed and some of the manager's efforts with our, the universities and colleges in the city. And after that, whether it's career or continuing education and opportunities for our young folks to get engaged in government activities, on up through adults and through to our senior citizens. The first segment looks at early childhood. Early childhood education has gotten a lot of focus, not only here in Norfolk, Virginia, and across the country, but as you see under the programs listed on the left-hand side of the page, these are the areas that we have taken very deliberate actions to try and improve the reality for our preschool, preschool prior to kindergarten-aged children. The Quality Rating Improvement System looks to establish or implement in the providers for early childhood education a rating system, much like restaurants have. So that as folks are looking for the services that they need based on their individual circumstance, they have a standard to know whether or not all of those that come up in a list, how they're rated or if they're not rated. But that is something that we've implemented and continues to grow with six providers thus far, 33 centers, and those numbers will continue to grow. The Small Business Development Center, in the same vein, looks to provide those early childhood educators with business support because their initiative, their value is in providing that growth model for our younger children. But the Small Business Development Center helps them with running the business so that they can continue to be viable and hopefully grow and expand, particularly those with the higher quality rating system. And actually, to go back for a second on the Quality Rating Improvement System, if you are at the lowest rating based on this system metrics, you are better, significantly higher than the state mandated requirements. So having any rating in this system is positive. TCC, their scholarship program is working with the teachers that are in those centers and providers, many of which have, are attending higher education for the very first time. What you'll see through, and I won't spend the time to go through each and every one of these, but there is a connectivity, and they all relate together. Parent education, some would suggest that education begins at birth. I'm actually a believer that it begins before birth with your health and nutrition so that you can grow a healthy baby before birth. Parent education looks to educate parents and families on what to expect after birth and through those first several years so that we have a very deliberate effort to try and improve Norfolk Public School Systems incoming students. So again, the early childhood education preparation, if you will. Kindergarten transition summits, PB Young Elementary-Kindergarten, and Young's Terrace Pilot Program is our efforts that specifically look to improve how Norfolk Public Schools is receiving students in that kindergarten or first grade. The Young Terrace Pilot essentially goes out to them before pre-K and says, "Come into the school and look at what you're getting ready to do." And we are very happy, of course, with Norfolk Public Schools, and even at PB Young, with the 28 kindergarteners that were registered. That helps not only improve our communities and our families, but the success of our school system. We also have Norfolk Public Libraries. That is one of our most forward-facing resources for all ages, but specifically for early childhood. The programs from Baby Garden and One, Two, Three Grow With Me, Toddler Time, Storytime is focused very much on that interaction that we know supports early childhood growth, whether it is merely hearing an adult voice reading a story, or interacting with them through tactile exercises, or even playtime. Playtime teaches folks how to interact with each other. And there are some, usually there's somebody off in the corner that's got the Legos building a large skyscraper. With Norfolk Public Libraries, in 2012, had over 2,500 programs engaging. It's that roughly a fifth of our population.
Darryl.
Yes, ma'am.
And Marcus. You know, when I sat on the library board, one of the, I very much like that we have all these programs available. But I would really like to see some of those programs available during the evenings or on weekends. A lot of the programs are available during the day. And if you have parents who work, they are not necessarily able to participate. And so I'd like to see some of those, those programs like that for early literacy in our libraries. I know on Saturdays, our libraries usually close, I think at 5:00. Only weekends are open till like maybe 6:00 or 7:00 or whatever. But if we could get some of those programs available in the evenings when parents are off, you know, I think it would, it would be helpful, and we would be able to reach an additional demographic or an additional number of youth.
Recreation, parks, and open space is, of course, one of our primary areas in addition to libraries. That's engaging youth. Although Recreation Parks and Open Space engages, starting at, say, the six, seven-year-old range, on up through high school. Some of these programs are very familiar to you, whether it's Digital Connectors or the After the Bell Program. The Norfolk Youth Council has been created and engaged in its meeting. And our Summer Youth Leadership Program is one that we're proud of. Bottom of the slide are some of the metrics about the number of youth that are participating in the various programs. And what we try and do, I think the Councilwoman Williams' point, is to provide a wide range of programs so that we present opportunities for those that may be interested, not only in different times, but different types of activities, be they individual or in groups. Youth in Government was a very nice event. I participated in it. It was very encouraging to see our 25 youngsters who participated, they're 11th and 12th graders from the school shown at the bottom of the slide, engage in conversation with the leaders of the city manager's administration. It was very impressive to me, the thoughtfulness with which they ask questions, and not surface questions. They really wanted to know what was going on and how you did this, and how you interact with regional authorities and the state and the federal government. And with the resources that the city manager was able to pull together and be in attendance, it was very helpful and I think effective because we had the ability, if we got asked a question that wasn't necessarily in our wheelhouse, we could say, "There's the director right there. I may not know the answer, but that person right there does know the answer." That's what they do every day. Our Norfolk Emerging Leaders continues to grow and succeed, and we are adapting to the experience of years past. This past year, we had 210 public school students ages 16 to 19. We also had interns, college-age kids. I want to say there were 22 of them. But particularly for the Norfolk Public School students, we provided some offerings to help educate them on financial literacy, doing the right thing with your money, as well as college-level training through communication and public speaking with the things that they were engaged in during the summer process in various city departments. And over the past two years, we've had seven of those students retained in full-time positions. I apologize. On the right side of the slide are our schedules for this year's, this summer's program. You'll see that the Emerging Leaders will begin right after the Fourth of July with the Executive Internship Program beginning just before the middle of June. City Manager has been meeting with the presidents of our universities to engage them in conversation about how we, as the city of Norfolk, and they, as our higher education institutions, might be able to improve upon the things that they're doing already, meaning the research focus at the various institutions and trying to find some synergies so that, much like other parts of the country have, we can formalize, for lack of a better word, and establish what our niche is. Our niche, our universities, our colleges, our niches. There are several meetings that have been held today. City Manager is continuing to meet with the presidents, and they're considering engaging a consultant to take a more formal look, in-depth look at each of the universities and what they're doing, and how some synergies can be arrived at.
Darryl, this was on our desk today, and it's a partnership between NSU and Regent. I know Regent's not within the city, and it really is only literally one exit out of the city. Does that have anything to do with this, or is this a separate partnership that these two universities have come together? Are you familiar with this?
I'm not sure that I'm familiar with that, but exactly what you just said, we realize that Regent should be at this table just as much as Norfolk State.
They really are the next exit.
Right.
Literally.
Right.
But there's Norfolk State, and we've been invited to this, and I would hope I can get there. It's unfortunately the middle of the afternoon. But it's, do we know what this, what this is, what they've partnered in? Have we heard yet?
It's their law school. It's Norfolk State and Regent's Law School. It's a partnership. Norfolk State has reached out with the new president. They've reached out to a lot of the high schools to create partnerships.
I saw that.
And then to strengthen the partnership between Norfolk State and TCC. And so that's just another one of the steps, to be able to offer their students a broader curriculum, and, you know, that they can, they can advertise and draw students into Norfolk State who can go into the locker room.
That's excellent. I mean, if I can get there, I'll get there. And I was just wondering if this, maybe with Regent just being literally next to away, maybe we should bring them into the discussion?
They are.
Okay.
They are, yes.
You know, it was my interest that, that we could make this region, I mentioned to you, an educational hub or destination, whatever is the best terminology, which would include Hampton, Christopher Newborn, and Regent, while they are, you know, we're separated by a body of water from some of those. We really need to let parents or students who are getting ready to matriculate realize that we do have some wonderful educational institutions here. And that would also attract businesses here because they know that we would be developing a workforce. And it would also, with the businesses that we do have here, you know, Norfolk Southern, you know, youth schools and things like that, that we are developing a workforce. And so this is, this is, I guess, towards the goal that I'm interested in, in trying to create an economic, educational, should I say, hub, you know, here in this region or destination.
Yes, and cultivating and growing and embracing our existing workforce and the workforce that flows through this, our area, is critical to our, particularly as the city manager and Sabrina spoke to the big question mark on the graphic with regard to the defense sector. We have lots of talent in our city and our, in our region. There are lots of jobs, and we are working through economic development and human services and other departments, again, that's silo-free environment, to support educational and employment efforts in the city. You previously have seen our video for Employee Norfolk and are aware of our workforce developments that there is efforts which we are working on enhancing and expanding those efforts. But Human Services provides assistance currently through the Workforce Development Center, specifically to qualified residents of the city of Norfolk. City Manager, last year, 2012, reinstated our Tuition Assistance Program, which is available to employees to help in their self-development and education. Middle of the page covers the metrics on the cost per hour, the number of credits that are allowed per year. But at the bottom of the slide, it provides our 2012 results, with just under $43,000 spent providing ongoing or continuing education to 20 departments or offices across the city. Very bottom slide looks at the prior utilization of the program. And you'll see that with 81 degrees earned in the two years, or three years, between 2008, 9, and 10, 44 associates, 22 bachelors, and 17 master's degrees have been facilitated through the city's Tuition Assistance Program. This is something great that our employees love and utilize.
How many of them have you been able to retain as a result of that?
That's a very good question. We'd have to do some cross-referencing, particularly in this three-year period for the 81 degrees earned, to see how many are still employed by the city, but we can look at that.
Aren't they required to stay for at least one year after their final tuition reimbursement?
There are metrics around that timeframe, and I believe there's a sliding scale that says if you stay for this amount of time and leave, you got to pay back this amount. If you stay a longer period of time, it gets smaller. And then it goes away after a certain year, but we can get the details on that. I've seen it recently, but I don't want to misquote it.
It's one year, yeah. Better than that.
Supervisors Leadership Academy. We are not only growing our assistance to our residents, but also furthering our employees in the areas of management, leadership, communication, and team building. This is something that's very helpful as we lift morale throughout the city, not to suggest that it was low, but it can always be higher and better as we build upon the concept of Team Norfolk, and we are all working towards the same end, which is to make Norfolk as great as it can be. Believe you've seen previously our Veterans and Military Affairs information with regard to Virginia values. Veterans simply said, "We are leading in this area." We have a bronze-level category certification, which makes us vet-strong. We're the only municipality in Virginia that has that. The way we are doing things in Norfolk are serving as the training materials and best practices for others that are trying to do what we're doing. 19% of our employees were hired, 19% of our new hires have been veterans. We had a goal of 15%. We're outperforming. In addition, and all of the veterans hired across the Commonwealth, we're 5.4% of all of them. These numbers are as of, I believe, the end of December.
Public and private enterprise, right? 5.4% of it.
It's all veterans hired, yes.
All veterans hired, whether it's Zerox or whether it's City of Norfolk or City of Regent. That's correct. That's excellent.
Improved community engagement and participation, Neighbors Building, Neighborhoods, everybody's familiar with, Bob, and the rest of the folks in the city that are engaged with it are doing a great job of helping keep Norfolk as great and as beautiful as it is. We city employees can't do everything. This has been a great program, and continues to be a great program, to engage our citizens so that, again, in that same Team Norfolk spirit, we are all on the same side, which is Norfolk's side.
Can I go back for a second? The last slide as relates to veterans, which is great. You've been able to pinpoint percentages and what have you. We've talked about, you know, the number of jobs in the city of Norfolk. What are our, what are our efforts to be able to hire people within the city of Norfolk? You know, we often talk about that our numbers are higher outside than inside. We've made a conscious effort to, to look directly at a group and be able to say that we want to hire, what was it, 15% of veterans? We're up nineteen percent. Have we done the same metrics in terms of young people trying to hire more Norfolk residents, pairing them up with jobs? Do we have a number or a target that we're looking for there?
We have all the information and can, you know, sort through that to look at all of our employees.
No, we don't. We don't have it.
We don't have it? Yes, we do have the information.
Well, then, why wouldn't we have? I mean, you've gone in within a year or so and captured a group and been able to create goals and objectives in terms of employing fifteen percent of veterans. Why can't you do that for the population itself, City of Norfolk, saying that we want to make sure that we make a conscious effort to hire Norfolk citizens or to prepare them for jobs? We get a lot of young people that go away, come back, degree masters, and they can't find jobs within the city, accounting, so on and so forth. So why aren't we making a conscious effort to target young professionals that are going away, coming back, looking for opportunities within the City of Norfolk, and having those same goals and objectives? You alluded to all this education, but what good is it if we're not bringing these young people, if they come back and they don't have the opportunity to be successful in the city in which they grew up, with the school, or so on and so forth? Then they go to other municipalities. And so I believe that we have to capture, just like we want to capture some of that veteran talent, we should be trying to capture some of these young people who make the conscious decision to go to a four-year institution, get their masters, and come back here and ready to participate, be a part of the process. I would like to see goals as it relates to that, too.
I agree. I agree. We have to keep applying. There were just a couple more slides on our multicultural programs and libraries. We're looking to grow those. Volunteer Norfolk, we're doing great things with folks coming out and supporting us. Under five thousand volunteers, over two million dollars of value. Our adult offerings through Norfolk Public Libraries and Recreation Parks and Open Space with computer classes in partnership with AARP, and our senior centers, two senior centers, and the senior clubs that are at multiple facilities engage all of us. Our Norfolk Senior Olympics was the best program of the year by Bon Secours and the Successful Aging Forum. And there are several next steps that speak to some of the things that we're looking at doing with linking childhood education and workforce development, engaging the consultants with the City Manager's efforts on, with higher ed, and working through implementing the Leadership Development Program, an online training forum for the leanings, and tracking our metrics in lifelong learning, to the Vice Mayor's point. In the 2013 budget book, the metrics were included. Some of them are new, so they require some benchmarking, but looking at our metrics is definitely something we're focused on. And in our upcoming NEL class, we will use them to help look at lifelong learning opportunities across the region. Unless there are any other questions?
Brian, I think it was Mayor.
Brian on the phone?
Here.
Yes, sir.
Is he? Okay, does he know he only has five minutes?
Yes.
He really knows that?
Yes.
Okay. I had to cancel.
All right. We ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, Council. The manager's given me five minutes tonight, so I'm going to be brief, and we'll only have time to cover a few legislative topics of importance. I'm happy to answer any questions the Council might have at the end of my update. First, an update on Norfolk's prior legislative requests, HB 1970. This is our public art installation bill. It passed Senate General Laws yesterday, twelve to one, and is now being considered by the full Senate. We have no concerns with passage at this time. HB 1706, this is our city charter bill, passed unanimously in Senate local government this afternoon, and is now heading to the full Senate for consideration. Also, we have no concerns with passage at this time. The fifty million dollars in intercity passenger rail operating and capital fund is actually contemplated in the governor's recently amended Senate Finance Committee Bill, HB 2313. This is a nice segue into the most important transportation development, which happened this morning in Senate Finance Committee. As you'll recall, Council, the Senate failed to pass Governor McDonald's Comprehensive Transportation Plan, which was SB 1355. However, this morning, when the Senate Finance Committee considered its companion, HB 2313, this is Speaker House bill, Senator Wagner offered the substitute proposal alongside with Delegate Chris Jones, who was the Speaker's proxy. With little debate, the committee approved this substitute, nine to six. It had four Republicans and five Democrats on the committee, and now it's headed to the Senate floor. More than likely, the House and Senate Conference Committee will be formed to work out the transportation funding scenario. Here are the major provisions, which are substantially different from what the governor's introduced bill. The measure would provide roughly nine-hundred million annually for statewide road, rail, and transit projects, and the legislation also includes a regional component for Northern Virginia Hampton Roads and Greater Richmond. The regional component would require approval by local government bodies only. The state elements of the bill are as follows. It removes the proposal to eliminate state fuel excise tax and increases it from seventeen point five cents per gallon to twenty-two percents per gallon, and also it indexes the rate at the Producer Price Index for non-residential construction. It imposes a statewide one percent sales tax on wholesale motor fuels, that's gas and diesel, and money from this element would be credited and used for local regional construction projects. The bill also increases a point five percent from a point five to point five-five percent. Sorry for the complexity, but this is an increase in the current sales and use tax proceeds that are dedicated to transportation. Money from this element would go to a statewide rail and transit program. It also increases the motor vehicle registration and weight-based fees by fifteen dollars, with the proceeds, again, going to statewide rail and transit programs. Interestingly, this amended bill prohibits tolling on existing interstate highways except for existing hot lanes and HOV lanes, and it also dedicates a sales and use tax revenue if the Federal Marketplace Equity Act to transportation is approved. If it's not approved and Congress does not act, the statewide motor fuel sales tax will then be increased by one percent. As it relates to the regional elements of this bill, it authorizes a statewide local option sales tax of up to one percent dedicated to local transportation priorities. Regional funding can be used for local roads, rail, or transit projects, and the local money can also be used for toll abatement. Under the Speaker's Substitute Bill, Norfolk generates a little over four million in FY14 in wholesale motor fuel tax, and under the local option sales tax at one percent, Norfolk generates almost twenty-six million dollars in FY14. There's also a local income tax bill that passed the Senate last week. This is SB 1313. It eliminates the requirements that a local income tax must be approved by local referendum. It would also repeal statutory language that requires the local income tax to end after five years unless it's approved by voters. If this bill passes, Norfolk, Portsmouth, and Virginia Beach will all have the option to impose a local income tax to pay for transportation. Onto education very quickly. There's a very troubling legislation to create a statewide school division to oversee poorly performing unaccredited public schools. HB 2096 and SB 1324 will require some school divisions to transfer per pupil funding, including funding that exceeds required local effort, to a newly-created statewide school division. The statewide school division, called Opportunity Educational Institution, also could vote to take over the management of any schools that have been accredited with warning for three years. If this legislation passes and the accreditation rankings from FY13 remain the same in FY14, Lafayette Winona Middle School and Ruffner Middle School could be transferred along with the students, all their student state, federal, and local funding to this institution, and this could be done against the will of Council or the school board. We are working to oppose this bill in a large coalition of opponents. I think I'm out of time for now, Council, but I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Questions? Brian, what are chances on this transportation bill surviving a vote in the House?
I'd say we'd have better than a fifty-fifty chance. There was some conciliatory gestures made, if you notice, that there still is a provision for some taking of general fund revenues that would normally be available. All the insiders are predicting that that number will potentially have to be increased to get a large share of House Republican support. The governor also had some pretty strong words that he released in a press release encouraging the General Assembly to take another look at the general fund allocation as he feels strongly that that is a core state responsibility and that we should take a look at how we are rationalizing the distribution of collected funds.
Okay. Income tax. Brian, you mentioned something about a local income tax.
Yes, sir.
Who came up with that idea?
That's Senator Stash. And we do actually have, we have the existing authority.
We've had that.
We've had that.
We just haven't implemented.
But we have a referendum requirement right now, and this would eliminate the referendum.
Eliminate the referendum requirement. Thank God we haven't used that.
Well, we wouldn't do it in a vacuum, I can promise you.
Oh, we can't do that.
Nope. I don't want to do that now.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Okay, Council, good luck.
What narrative was this guy, it's in Portsmouth, they want it. They want Virginia Beach and Norfolk.
It's on the books now that we could have.
If we'd never implemented it, we've never begun.
Has anybody done it?
No, the one in Virginia has done it.
They've added an income tax.
One percent.
Really?
The voters had to approve it.
But I think apparently they did.
And did they approve it?
I'm not sure about the Northern Oregon situation.
Unless they had a provision that allows their council.
But isn't that basically just a state cop-out, just pushing it back to us and saying, "Go tax your own people, keep it for yourselves"? Is that kind of what it is?
But they've been copping out anyway, so at least you give them some latitude.
Never.